Completing the order and welcome everyone here tonight. We'll have the roll call first.
Councilman Campbell.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Willingham.
Present.
Councilman Hadley.
Here.
Councilman Lawrence.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Smith.
Present.
Councilman Palmer.
Here.
Call on Councilman Hadley to give our invocation and then we'll all stand for the place of the flag.
Yeah, I'm fine. Thank you for letting us come out here and do work in your name, Lord, give us praise and glory, Lord. Let's just look down when our council used to be with Mr. Kelson, our healing strength, the healing strength, Lord, to give yours, Lord, we pray.
Amen.
Yeah. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, you, I'm gonna break order here just a little bit. You mentioned someone by name, you wanna explain?
Mr. Kelson, Philip Kelson.
Philip?
He had surgery last week on his foot. He's home, he's at the hospital. He's healed.
Okay, okay, well good. I did not have that.
I did.
Thank you. Is that right?
No.
Well.
We pray a little loud.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Yes.
You have received the minutes in your package. Do about the minutes from the last meeting, or there any discussion on them, or do we have a motion?
I have one discussion.
Okay.
Uh, I think it's the third page where we have, I can comment about the homeless shelter. It's where it has Michigan House of Hope started by, it's not started by, it's doing business as.
Okay.
Yes.
Michigan County House of Hope doing business as.
Yes.
Okay.
And I'll make that change there.
Okay.
Okay, then do I hear a motion?
I make the motion.
Second. Motion, second, to approve the minutes from the June 11th meeting. All in favor, raise your hand. Those like sign. Thank you. We'll go into our reports, our report for the administrative committee.
This is an ordinance that has been supplied by the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. This ordinance will bring the city up to date on the latest edition of state mandated codes. The administrative committee recommends adoption of the ordinance and authorize the mayor to sign. This is a motion.
Second. Motion, second, to pass an ordinance to bring us up to code with state mandated codes. Do we have any discussion on this? And then before we lose discussion, you wanna just give us a brief idea of what's going on.
I will. Mayor Tweedy, this ordinance, we, as a council, is a where you've adopted in the past ordinances, international building code, international mechanical code, plumbing code, electric code, fire code, those, all these different codes. And in the past, as they were updated by the state of Georgia, you had to come back and adopt those codes each time. This, and actually Charles Kelly and Carl and I have been working on coming up with a draft to send to our attorney for his review that would do something similar to this. Well, Charles got in touch with the Department of Community Affairs and lo and behold, they had already drafted something up, which was a good thing. But this ordinance, when you, when the city council adopts it, well, automatically as the Department of Community Affairs adopts new codes, this ordinance will automatically put that code in force over the city and you will not have to go through that process again.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna ask our city attorney to give us some highlights on this one, this ordinance for us.
Well, I can sort of read it to you, it, I do, but it's essentially what Bennett said it is. It's an ordinance regarding enforcement of the Georgia State Minimum Standard Code for Construction and for other purposes, whereas the Georgia State Minimum Standards Code for Construction promotes the life, health, safety, and general welfare of all citizens. And whereas such codes, said codes are also designed to protect the property of all citizens. And whereas the City of Camilla finds it in the best interest of the health, safety, morals, and welfare of its citizens to inspect buildings and provide building code enforcement. And whereas the City of Camilla has a building inspections department and a code enforcement program that has the staff and the expertise to properly inspect buildings and to carry out other code enforcement related duties. And whereas it is the desire of the mayor and council to enforce and/or adopt and enforce in all respects the various Georgia State Minimum Standard Codes for Construction. And now for get ordained by the mayor and council that it is the intent of the City of Camilla to enforce the latest addition of the following, Georgia Department of Community Affairs, and these are the lists of the code, international building code, international mechanical code, international fuel gas code, international plumbing code, national electric code, international fire code, international residential code for one and two-story family dwellings, international energy conservation code, international swimming pool and spa code. Ordained further that the following appendices of said code, as adopted and amended by the Georgia Department of Community Affairs are hereby adopted by reference and as though they were copied fully herein. International Building Code Appendix, International Mechanical Code Appendix, International Plumbing Code Appendix, International Fuel Gas Code Appendix, International Fire Code Appendix, International Residential Code for one and two-story family dwellings Appendix. Further ordained that the following codes, the latest edition, as adopted and amended by the Georgia Department of Community Affairs are hereby adopted by reference as though they were copied herein fully. International Property Maintenance Code, International Existing Building Code. And all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed and this ordinance will take effect on and that's to be put in by the council.
Okay, thank you. You've heard a summary and the ordinance, so do we have any conversation, questions or discussion about the order? Okay.
Lee, is this sort of, is this pretty much a standard statewide that don't be, I mean, that's what it usually is?
Right.
I was gonna make sure.
It is. And the changes in the individual codes are usually not dramatic. They're small, but there are changes each, uh, code, so they just have to be updated.
Okay. All in favor of the ordinance, pass this, raise your hand. Okay. Those like sign and passes, and thank you. Is that all we have from the administrative committee?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Public Works Committee.
The city received two bids for a tractor and boom mower. The bids were open and ready to go out on June 28, 2012. City received bids from Amtrak in the amount of $94,850 and Albany Tractor Company, the satellite store in Pearl, in the amount of $91,985.71. Both bids were met specifications. City manager Bennett Adams has recommended the city accept the low bid. The public works committee recommends the city accept the low bid from Albany Tractor Company, amount of $91,985.71. That's a form of motion.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, a second, to accept the low bid from Albany Tractor Company for a tractor and boom mower. Do we have any further discussion?
Yes. Yeah, I'm like, I thought it was just a boom. What are we gonna do, both? The boom comes mounted on the tractor. I mean, it's no, it's highly unusual just to get a boom mower.
Okay.
It's a package.
It's a package. It's put on it. I mean, that's, that's something that just any, I mean, they actually send the tractor to the boom manufacturer and it's mounted there.
Okay.
And it arrives as a package.
Okay, alright. Anything else you want to talk about?
Yeah, I'd like to just, this is really the first piece of equipment that we purchased of, you know, of this, of this value, I guess is the best way to put it. And I really, I think we maybe talked about this at some point, but always put together some basic specifications. And in this case, and in all cases in future bidding, I'll have a pre-bid meeting with the sales representatives, give them a copy of the specifications, ask them to look at them if they have an issue. I mean, hard as anyone tries, Brian knows this from his tractor dealership days, they won't make, you can't go and get the same tractor from two places. They're a little bit different. And it's even worse when you get into big yellow construction equipment. So, I try to write something that, you know, doesn't write anybody out, give them an opportunity, both our local vendors to come in, sit down, look at these, take the specifications and come back and present it. And I wanna say both of the bids were less than I thought they would be, which is a good thing. This particular piece of equipment is, I had several conversations with a salesperson who is actually out of Albany store, although this machine will be sold and serviced by our local Mitchell County dealer here. And he, I asked him where the unit was being used. He told me several places. One place he told me was in Lee County. And I called the county administrator, who's a good friend of mine, and asked him how they, you know, how they've been, what their feeling was about the machine. And he said, well, tell you the truth, I don't know, but I'm gonna call my public works director and get back with you. And he did that immediately. And he said they've had the machine for about a year and have been very satisfied with it. So, that's the reason I recommended that we accept, that you accept the low bid.
Okay.
I have one more thing. What, um, what's the plans to do with the old piece of machinery?
Probably sell it on gov deals. It's really, the boom, the boom on it, the boom mower is, it's got, it's a belly mounted or mid-mounted boom and it's been welded together so many times, really welding wells. And we'll sell it on gov deals. Actually, I probably should've put this on there, but the city council needs to declare that surplus so and authorize me to sell that on gov deal. And we'll, I'll try to get a ballpark figure of what that machine is worth and if we, usually we exceed that value on the gov deal sales, but then, you know, that money will come back and go into the general fund.
Okay. Anything else?
Does that need to be added to that?
Well, are you ready to do so, or?
Yeah, I mean, well, the tractor and boom mower we have now is, we just, it's down. And we're not gonna spend any more money on it, so.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll make two separate items. Put them two separate items.
So, what's the round date when we approve this one? Probably about 45 days. And the other one is down already? So, we need to be clear. Alright.
Might need some round out.
Yeah. Well, that's another story.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Okay, all in favor of contracting with the Albany Tractor Company for this tractor and boom mower, raise your hand. All opposed, like sign and it passes. Thank you.
Second item. The 2011 water quality report has been distributed to mayor and council. The report was advertised in the Camilla Enterprise Wednesday, July 4, 2012. The report has also been posted at the front and rear entrances of city hall and has been posted on the city's website. This is an item, it requires no action, this is just for information. And I just wanna say that we are so fortunate to have the quality and quantity of water available here in Mitchell County. I know in some of our meetings in Savannah, the other cities were discussing problems they were having with the amount of water and the quality and all, and we're just, we're just fortunate to have. This is one of our biggest assets we have in Mitchell County. But everything looked great.
Okay, okay, thank you. Uh, so you wanna go into the surplus property at this time? We've got a second here. Are you ready to do so, or you wanna wait till the, oh, the tractor comes in?
Let's just hold off.
Okay, that's good. We'll do that in our, yeah. Okay. Let's see. I believe that's all of our reports. Mr. City Attorney, do you have?
No, no report.
Okay. City manager?
Just a couple of things to, I think, council and citizens that might be watching on television on things that are going on. We've got, we've, I've been talking about Austin State, folks that are doing our customer satisfaction survey, they, I haven't spoken with them in the last couple of days, but they had eighty responses out of the four hundred already. And they're gonna do a second mail probably this week. We're hoping to get, you know, a hundred and fifty or something like that. So, the Camilla Woodyard project is well underway. If you've been by there, they're moving a lot of dirt. They discovered that the walls of the existing retention pond were a little weak. And so they changed the design so that the new pond will be the major, the primary holding pond, so it'll take off most of the water and the old pond, the outflow from that will be muted out there and it can hold, you know, I mean, I don't think it's in danger of failing if we put, if we, if that pond got filled completely up, it's possible that it's gonna fail. Because we discovered this during, it was really a good thing that they were pumping some water out of it and one of the lines burst and put a good bit of water on a slope and it opened the slope up and, anyway, they redesigned it and it's perfectly safe now. And what, I mean, the design is actually better than it would've been had that not happened. So, maybe that was, it's a good thing to have. I hope everybody enjoyed the CNS fireworks display that went. I think we had an estimated three thousand people there. I'm not very good at that, but I talked to the police officers that were there and they said we had about three thousand people. It's about a twenty-five minute fireworks display. The mayor and I actually walked down with the fire chief and he was doing his final inspection and I'd never seen, you know, the actual setup where they were firing the fireworks like that. It was quite informative. And I, I do wanna especially thank our, all of our employees that had anything to do with the fireworks display, especially our public works department, fire and police department. They did an outstanding job, I think, especially the, well, all of them did, but the police department, they, they did a really good job. We had one minor fender bender after the, after the fireworks display. And unfortunately, from what they told me, that's not uncommon to have one or two as they come back into town. New Walmart project as well on its way. They're, I think, they're trying to get back on schedule. We had a pre-construction meeting here about a week ago with all the city staff and the different crafts that'll be working out there. Their, their schedule right now is about the end of August to have the walls and the roof on. And you can actually right out there now to see the footers and the rebar and you can see what seventy thousand square meters that look like, and that's a big store. I've been talking about a bountiful woodyard project to extend our gas system up to them. I guess the gas meter is gonna come in, that hopefully it'll be in this week. Well, I talked to Eddie Harper, our gas consultant, and he actually got one, a meter in that he was gonna use in another project. And he said, I'm such a good fellow, we're gonna go ahead and put that one in. And I said, good, and start settling them, yes, you are a good fellow. Our airport T-hanger project is basically complete. They're working through a punch list. If you have a chance to ride out, that is really a nice project, if you have been able to enjoy out there. And we already have one, one of them, really. Our chip program has been slow getting started. We do have work write-ups on three of the homes now. We're meeting with the regional commission tomorrow. Hopefully that project will get going. There's just a whole lot of paperwork, environmental review, work write-ups, different things that have to be done in any of these housing rehabilitation projects. I did one years ago, I did two of them years ago, and I know what is involved and it does take a long time. Speaking of taking a long time, the industry project has been some, some time getting started. HTS contractors have been given a proceed order now to get started. That's the drainage project there and the new, new housing authority units. We have gotten the easements. I think our, our city attorney's staff is going up, I've gotten verbal permission to get started, and we, we have told the contractor to give us a date when he's gonna start and we're ready to get going there. A Broad Street sidewalk project should be started this week. I think I had enclosed some information on the bids in your, in your packet. Lincoln Street Drainage Project, I've actually, I'm the reason that's taken a little bit longer, but I called Ms. Hicks. I called her today and said, I was, I was the reason for it, but I explained to her, I asked the engineers to go back and look at, take some additional shots to make sure that what we did would correct the problem, 'cause we walked out there and looked at it. You know, you get out there and looking at it on the ground, walking around a little fool, the elevations will, and they took some additional shots. And I explained to her what we hoped to do and she's satisfied. But I should have a draw, that I take the Billy Carroll label, I might, we're gonna have to get an easement from him to put the pipe in to drain that. But that's moving along. On the twenty, we had a July 25th call, meeting to set the mill rate and also to discuss the cost of service study for the electric system and present a new rate schedule based on that for the city council's review and eventual adoption. Because the county does not have our tax digest, the digest is ready, but the appeal period has not been completed. And it won't be completed in time for them to give us a five-year history and advertise it in the newspaper in order for the council to legally vote on it at that point. So, all we'll do is just put that back and have that, take that action, present that action for your review and vote during the regular August 13th meeting of the city council. We'll still have the July 25th meeting, there'll be a work session versus a call meeting. Just a reminder, Danny Palmer and I will be representing the city next week at the MEAD conference. We've done some sidewalk work on North Hardy. I don't know if any of y'all have noticed that. We, I think you can just about walk from Broad Street to the city limits now on the sidewalk, where you couldn't prior to that. Working with the city attorney's office, I guess, I'm working with Kelly.
Kelly Robinson.
Kelly Robinson on getting, getting a quick claim deed for the portion of the Hardy Street School that is currently owned by the city. And also we're working on, on an agreement that will try to incorporate some of the concerns that the city council have had about the use of auditorium and other things. And we're gonna get a draft up and hopefully that'll be ready. I've actually sat down and written a draft up, you know, just some, some bullet points that need to be in that. And I talked to Kelly something for some length the other Friday afternoon. Hopefully we'll have that ready for your review soon.
What was the day of that call meeting?
Twenty-fifth.
That's a Wednesday.
It's a work session. It'll be a work session, not a, not a call meeting.
Doesn't it necessary to have that work session?
Well, it'll be the only work session we've had this month.
It's really for Michael I to use our electrical consultant to come and talk, you know, present that. Or we can do it.
Well, more session appointment next Tuesday, right?
No, no.
Cancelled, I want to move it.
Yeah.
So, can't we go back now?
I won't be here.
It doesn't bother, it doesn't.
Well, I mean, if you're not, we can just not have a meeting if that's the wish, so the council and just have the regular work.
I mean, play back to the original one, I just will be out of town.
So, you'll be here for the 25th?
No.
No, I should be out.
Okay.
I'll be here Tuesday. I'm leaving the 21st.
Is any kind of advertising we need to do?
Well.
We all have.
Oh, they'll be down, so that's alright.
Just one person will be missing.
That's fine.
Just be on vacation. I will be vacationing.
Okay.
Yeah, I have to go to a Christmas party.
Okay. Well, we'll continue with the 25th. That's, but that is a Wednesday, isn't it? It's enough.
Yes, it is.
Well, we're still to go for the 25th.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
I think I reported this, but I did finally get, get up with the railroad folks and met down here at the tracks and he's getting that, the gentleman's supposed to get back with me with a proposal on what it's gonna cost to get that crossing straightened out.
Okay. But we're looking forward to that.
Yes.
Okay. Under mayor's announcement, city manager's already taken care of all of them. But I did wanna thank the fire department and the police department and public works for their work at the CNS fireworks show. And I wanna thank the people for coming out. It's a great opportunity for families to get together and have a good time and see a good show and see what you can see at much larger towns. We, CNS thirty years has spent the money to put on a good show and I thank it's drawing a lot of folks, not only from Camilla and Mitchell County, but also for some of the surrounding counties as well. So, I wanna thank the departments for their work and folks for coming out and enjoying it. I believe there were a few new wrinkles that I saw in the fireworks. It may not have been, it was about the same amount of time, but it looked like some of the fireworks displays were a little bit different than I had been noticing before. Councilman Hadley has a special guest with him tonight, and I want him to introduce him to us.
Yes, I have Mr. Anthony Ives. He's a, he's the youth of the year for the Jester Boys and Girls Club here in Camilla. He's doing shadowing week with me. So, today we had the council meeting, so I invited him. Next week we gonna come back to the city hall and actually go through it. But, please come up. He's a senior at Pearl High School. He's been to the, stand right here. He's been, that's great right there.
Man, you get up and say hi.
He's, he's also, he been to all the teen summit, he just left, got from the teen summit. He's been to Atlanta when they did the youth of the year program. He was the second runner for the county youth of the year. But tell us some of the things you did. He also works at Boys and Girls Club at Jester.
I go to Jester. I volunteer at the school, yeah, help kids out, homework. I also lead the passport manhood over there.
So, he's met all the council, so, it's Mr. Campbell, Mr. Palmer, they walked in. But he's, so next week we will actually be youth from the Boys and Girls Club to be shadowing different organizations here in Camilla, Mitchell County around. So, you'll probably see different youth going around with different people. I think some of the judges and some clerks and courts, so we have different people. So, just, you see them, give them a hand, give them a little knowledge, understanding, that's a little, you don't even know where I'm at there.
You got a child in Paris, that's your grandmom.
Yes.
Why are you grown, right? Your parents great.
We thank you.
Congratulations on your awards and your service and we appreciate it, appreciate you coming. Andrea, would you like to say a word?
No, I'm just, I'm just.
You're just here, okay. All right, well, we appreciate all of y'all coming and we appreciate the work that goes on with the Boys and Girls Club. We cannot say that enough. It's making a big difference in the youth of our community and we appreciate you and your staff for what they do. Do we have any, any other business, any other citizens make a presentation?
I think we, we announced the awards, over one, it's down.
Very good, yes. You go ahead.
I don't know what you have to announce on your individual awards.
Well, Councilman Hadley and Councilwoman Willingham and Councilwoman Smith went through the, what is it, John Knox?
Yes.
Leadership.
Leadership training award.
Leadership training. And so they got their awards. And they also won some awards for their studies that they have done at, throughout the. the last couple of years with GMA. So you got, you got what?
Two. I got one, recommend one that size. They in the car, I think they can bring them.
What was your, was it 24?
Forty-two.
Forty-eight.
Forty-two.
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 Well, that, that just shows you that they're interested in what they're doing. They're studying to make themselves better council people, and which will make Camilla better as well. So we congratulate you on all your awards, your accomplishments, and the leadership training, and we, we thank you for your service to Camilla. Anything else?
I just want to say, Anthony, I am so proud of you. It goes back to first grade. You know, you gave me a round there once in paradise. I am just so proud, you see? You got your head up right now. Proud of it. I can see was that the same happened to Anthony? I'm flub proud.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have anything else, or do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion, Derek. Have a motion, a second. All in favor, raise your hand. We're adjourned, and president, you got?